The Governing Board for all of the Special Assessment and Taxing Districts into session. Only those items that are scheduled specific time will be heard at that time. All other items may be taken out of sequence for staff and public availability. We are going to go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask Supervisor Hemmingson to lead us, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, and welcome. Any introduction of new employees? Nope? Well, how about report of actions out of closed session? County Council?
Nothing to report today.
Very good. So at this time, the Chair is going to request any deletions or additions to the agenda. And in order to place an item on the agenda, it has to arisen subsequent to posting the agenda and also require action prior to our next meeting. Any such items? No? All right. So let's receive brief reports, announcements, many committees or supervisors, and let's start with Supervisor Sullivan.
Mine's going to be a little bit brief, because I was out of town for a good part of between our last meetings. So I had a two-by-two meeting with the Healthcare District Supervisor Hemmingson, and I did, and the discussion item was the possibility of forming a joint powers authority with the Healthcare District. Also had a solid waste meeting where we discussed our three document on getting input from the public on the rough draft. There should be more to come on that, and that was it.
Very good. Supervisor McClure?
Thank you. I had several meetings in between our last meeting and this meeting, but it's definitely beginning of the political season, and Jared Huffman was here, and he did a presentation on Medicare and Social Security. And I wasn't happy when I learned that once you pay $109,000 in your Social Security taxes, it stops. So the people who make more than that don't pay payroll tax on their Social Security. And that's something that he's working on, and he has some joint legislation that hopefully will at least raise it, if not make all people responsible for sharing when they have payroll tax. I also hosted an event with Mike McGuire and Jim Woods, where they came to town and knocked on doors and had a small army of people out and about, and it was very exciting because they have certainly heard the message that for our representation, we want them to know this area and our neighborhoods, and they're more than willing to be part of our neighborhoods, which was great. Juvenile Justice met, and we discussed a scholarship that we're working on that hopefully people will contribute to, and it's just designed for kids who have gotten on the right road. And so it's kind of an exciting scholarship project that we're working on. I was called into court for the retribution of part of the Senior Center settlement, and I'm happy to report that today on my way to the California Coastal Commission, our Veterans Memorial Monument looks like it's probably going to move to consent. So that's about it. And Redwood Park Association, I also hosted a meeting in Orike.
Good. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Thank you. I had a meeting with the local ag community, just talking about some strategies and being able to keep themselves in business. Had several meetings. As Supervisor Sullivan said, we had an ad hoc meeting with the Healthcare District, but I also met with some other doctors and people that were concerned about the activities at Sutter Coast Hospital. I went to the Chamber Mixer at the Sutter Coast Hospital Clinic, and then I attended Supervisor Gitlin's Town Hall meeting, and I'm sure he'll elaborate on that more. As Supervisor McClure stated, Jared Huffman was in town. I was able to get to part of that meeting on Social Security and Medicare. I went to the presentation on the possible, oh, actually, it was just a presentation on strip mining, on how strip mining is done, and I guess there's a couple of possibilities in Oregon where they may be thinking about some mining operations that may affect Del Norte County. So not much information as far as what is really going on, but just a presentation on strip mining in general. Had Water Coast Airport Authority meeting, and I met with Mr. Lowry, John Lowry, who's a candidate for Assembly. That was it for me.
Good. Supervisor Gitlin?
Thank you. First of all, to acknowledge our IT Department with its beautifully articulated sign, a little note on there, speak directly into microphone. We've certainly gotten enough comment from people who say they can't hear the audio because we're not speaking directly, so I'm going to make conscious the fact to speak directly into the microphone, and thank you, Dan, for reminding me of that. Immediately after the last meeting, the last Board of Supervisors meeting, I attended the law enforcement Del Norte awards presentation, leading awards. That was a Tuesday evening in the Cultural Center, which we honor our city and our Sheriff's Department, Pelican Bay State Prison, Highway Patrol for their individual outstanding performances for the past year. And I really was very honored to be there to recognize these fine citizens for the job they do to help protect us. With Supervisor McClure, I attended a Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention meeting, and there we established opportunities for graduating students to seek scholarship opportunities in academic and technical programs, give them an opportunity, a window into the future, and very proud to be part of that effort. Attended our monthly Chamber of Commerce meeting Friday, the 28th, where the number of visitors, it was reported to the Visitor Center, continues to rise quite dramatically, I might add. The number of visitors has risen 24% for the first quarter of this year, January, February, and March. And in the month of March alone, it's up 44%. So this is a good sign for our summer. We're going to have lots of people coming into Del Norte County. Good news. Also last Saturday, I attended Representative Jared Huffman's Town Hall meeting at Educational Options. The subject was Social Security. The Congressman also indicated he's maintaining a neutral position on the Sutter Coast Hospital status at this time, and I hope those of you listening will send in comments and letters to get our Congressman on board to keep the status of the hospital at the very highest level, which is acute care. And the Congressman at this time is taking a neutral position. The Saturday night, we attended the Save the Fair, where over 1,000 people were there. They sold, I think, 1,200 tickets, raising money. And of course, this is going to be a ballot measure on the November ballot, needs two-thirds majority, to keep our fair going past the year 2016. So we're proud to be part of that effort. chaired the special meeting in the Solid Waste Management, as Supervisor Sullivan had mentioned to you. And we'll be talking about the R3 report, the second of two drafts, and we're moving toward a final report, and we'll have more to report to you tomorrow after that meeting. Last Tuesday, the Citizens Advisory Committee on Last Chance Grade met with the trustees of the College of the Redwoods in a rare meeting that we have up here in Del Norte County. And the trustees, after a presentation from a few of the members of the advisory committee, the trustees voted to join several other government and quasi-government agencies and local businesses in writing a letter of support to the Local Transportation Commission, requesting Caltrans to build a bypass around the precarious Last Chance Grade. The letter was part of numerous other, will join numerous other letters of support so that we can find a permanent solution to this compromised part of the 101 Highway, 11 miles south of Cresta City. With Supervisor Hemmingson, I attended a nickel strip mining community meeting at the Lighthouse Inn. I'm not quite sure what the purpose of this meeting was other than advisory. Many of those attending expressed grave concern of any effort to extract nickel from the pristine Smith River. I don't anticipate that there will be any strip mining for nickel in the Smith for any time or any place in the future. Thursday, I attended the monthly luncheon of the Republican Women Federated at the new Republican Headquarters at the Mason Mall. The women's group, as part of its advocacy, announced its support of the Del Norte County Healthcare District's opposition to Sutter Hospital moving toward critical access, and urged the Board of Supervisors to similarly pass its own resolution to seek a new healthcare partner if Sutter Health continues its efforts to regionalize and downgrade the hospital from acute care status to critical access. Later in the day, I attended the kickoff of Sheriff Dean Wilson's reelection campaign, and also attended this past Sunday a barbecue to meet and speak with the sheriff at Ocean World. Also attended another PowerPoint presentation of Fish and Game Commission discussing possible changes in shore fishing at the spit of the mouth of the Klamath. A similar meeting was held in Eureka some weeks back, and I'd like to thank the Department of Fish and Wildlife for conducting this meeting for those interested parties who were unable to attend the meeting in Eureka. Later in the afternoon, I conducted a pre-agenda meeting for Wednesday's Solid Waste Meeting, which will be held tomorrow, obviously. I had a luncheon and visited with constituents at the Senior Center Friday and met several who wanted to learn more and share their opinions on several Del Norte County matters, including Sutter Coast Hospital and those up for election, and the June 3 ballot issue on Jefferson State. Good luncheon meeting, lots of people, very interested, engaged. On the local level, recently retired attorney Mario Di Salini celebrated his 75th birthday, and I was a part of his family and group in helping him celebrate that momentous milestone. Also, I purchased a fish subscription. That's what it's called, a fish subscription, which is a fresh fish subscription for a two-pound allotment of fresh fish caught locally on a weekly basis from local fisherman Kenyon Hensel for fresh fish. And I really admire this entrepreneurial spirit that Mr. Hensel is doing. I want to support that. So he's selling these fish subscriptions for a five-week period, and you can stretch it out as long as you want over that, over a five-week period. You get two pounds of fish every time he comes in at the dock and get truly fresh fish. So that's Kenyon Hensel, and I want to congratulate him for going in that area. And Town Hall presentation at the Fairgrounds, Thursday, the 27th. The issues, we covered a bunch of them. A hospital update and possible eminent domain action, opposing Sutter Coast's attempt to remove local control of our local, and lower hospital status from acute care to critical access. A lot of engagement on that subject. We discussed Last Chance Grade and brought up the subject of three signs at our county signs at our portals into, we'd add three signs to the signs where it says Del Norte County, where veterans are honored, and I'm going to ask our Chair to place that in an upcoming agenda so we can have that hopefully in the near future. So also met Assembly Candidate John Lowry of Sonoma County, and we chatted a while in my office. Seems like a real nice guy, and wish him well in this election. That's our week.
I believe we already voted on the veterans and gave direction. I remember wordsmithing it with you. Anyway, I'm going to be brief. I had a Regional Council of Rural Counties meeting in Sacramento. Some of the issues, we talked about everything from state pill to the water bonds to the California drought legislation, groundwater management, Forestry Coalition updates, other natural resources issues, Assembly Bill 32 scoping plan, climate adaptation, air resources, U.S. Forest Service land management planning, SRA fees, status of the fairs, et cetera, et cetera, all on behalf of rural counties. I also went to the Save the Fair Dinner and Auction, well-attended, great presentation, great auction, great dinner. Attended the CAPC, the Child Abuse Prevention Coalition, flag raising at the Family Resource Center, and then the speeches and the flag raising down at the Fairgrounds. We honored Director Blatnick for all his years of efforts towards child abuse prevention, and that was also well-attended. The weather cooperated. Had some agenda reviews, attended the Airport JPA, as Supervisor Hemmingson had said, we're rolling right along on that. Had a meeting at the Family Resource Center regarding First Five and some of the plans for the Family Resource Center. Participated in the State Association of Counties Officers calls. Had lunch with some caring individuals to try to talk about planning for a children's budget, how to design something like that. Had a First Five meeting, and then after this is over, I'll be heading back to Sacramento to have some talks with the Governor regarding more money in the allocations for AB 109, as well as perhaps support as a pilot program for our fairs. And with that, CAO, what do you got for us?
Over the last couple of weeks, we've been dealing with some miscellaneous personnel issues.
Mental issues? Those too, Jay, on a daily basis.
Well, yeah, that too. Some department internal issues throughout the departments in the county, which are fairly typical, contract negotiations, employee-related negotiations, starting the budget for the requested budgets, where the individual departments will be submitting their requests to the budget team so that we can then come forward with something for the Board of Supervisors by the end of June. And I have met with a couple of the political candidates that have come in and asked questions about county government, and we will be continuing basically with the number of contract negotiations coming up, too.
Good. Thank you. So let's go ahead and take the consent agenda. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, which is items four through 15. Any public comment on any matter that's on the consent agenda? And pulling it back to the Board for the discussion or questioning? Poll the vote, please.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Okay. On the consent agenda was a resolution of recognition for the Older Americans Month, which will actually be in May, so we're getting a little ahead of ourselves, which is always good. Older Americans Month 2014 proclamation, gray matters, Area One Agency on Aging, whereas Del Norte County is a community that includes 5,615 citizens ages 60 and older, which is 20% of the total population in Del Norte County. And whereas Del Norte County is committed to helping all individuals live longer, healthier lives, and whereas the older adults in Del Norte County have made countless contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations, and whereas we recognize the value of injury prevention and safety awareness in helping older adults remain healthy and active, and whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals, young and old, by emphasizing the need to take action to safeguard themselves from unintentional injuries where they live, work, and socialize, providing information on avoiding leading causes of injury for older adults, falls, motor vehicle-related incidents, suffocation, medication overdose, and fire and burns, and helping older adults take control of their safety and well-being. Now therefore be it resolved that the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim May 2014 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every residence to take time this month and next month to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to the community, passed and adopted unanimously on this, the eighth day of April. And Supervisor Gitlin, would you please, we'll give that to you, to find its way to the area agency, please.
It will go to Maggie Kraft, and they've done a great job, and the amount of seniors moving into Del Norte County and including the increased population is going to go 20% by the year 2020. So we have a growing senior population. I'm really happy to see this resolution.
Yes, we are. Okay, let's go to budget transfers, which is items 16 through 19. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Moved to approve item 0308, 0309, 03010, and 0311, items 16, 17, 18, 19 on the agenda.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any public comment on any of these budget transfers, which have to do with public health cost plans, social services cost plans, drug and alcohol program cost plan, and the increase for psychiatric inpatient hospital use? Back to the Board, comments? Poll the vote, please.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. Number 21, jumping around, is authorize the Board Chair to send the attached letter opposing Senate Bill 1270, which is the paved lee, having to do with the California Surface Mining and Reclamation Act, SMARA. Basically, what's going on here is the lead agency on all your SMARA permits is the county. The state, this legislation would change it to be the state. If you think things move slow at the county, you have no idea how slow they move at the state level, and it would be taking away some local control and some time constraints, imposing time constraints. So it is something I believe that, as well as RCRC, as well as CSAC, would like to oppose. Can I get a motion on sending this letter out?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any public comment on this? Back to the Board. Anybody else have anything to say? All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes, carries unanimously. Number two would be consider any miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the county of Del Norte. Authorize the Chair to sign. Jay, we got anything like that?
Well, when we started this morning, we didn't have anything for the Board to sign, but I received an email in between closed session and now, and RCRC is actually asking for another letter of support. The Board has already taken this on regarding the payment of pill through the state of California to the counties that have not received pill since 2003.
Didn't we already sent a letter doing that?
We have, and this is an additional letter of support, so I'm just reporting that they've sent one to us. I'll read that report, make sure it's consistent with what the Board's already approved, and if the Board would like to ratify that, that's fine today, too.
I think consistent with the position the Board has already taken. If it is synonymous with letters we've sent in the past, RCRC always does a great job, and if we can be a signatory to their letter, so direct it.
Okay. In addition, following a couple of bills, there's a lot of them out there, but two in particular. One is the new Assembly Bill 1331, which is a water bond bill that is replacing a previous water bond bill or competing with it, making some changes. So we'll be following that one. There's some funding that could be available through that if it is passed. It's a general obligation bond. SB 1278, which has to do with animal control, we have some concerns, and I have sent my concerns forward. It has to do with the powers of arrest and warrants for animal control officers. It expands their requirements. It also expands their continuing education, which we're proponents of continuing education, but the amount of education that they're going to require could take our entire one-and-a-half positions off the streets for over a week each year. And so there has to be some reasonable to this and some ability for them to go online or to be able to at least be able to do something in our jurisdiction without taking them away from the duties that they already have. They're stretched very thin. They do a good job, but they're reacting at the state level, anticipating that these animal control offices have a lot of staff, and the rural counties, I'm sure, are going to be very concerned. So as this goes through, we'll continue to monitor it and give them our concerns. I do think that it's always good to see some continuing education requirements, but the powers of arrest and warrant are also interesting because a lot of times, the animal control agencies are under the sheriff, which means the deputies are involved in those, too, which would probably take some of the burden off of the larger counties, again, putting more of a burden on rural.
Good. Thank you for stretching that to the 10:25 time item, which is public comment. Any member of the public may address the Board on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the Board. Who's first? Nobody? Jump up now or forever hold your peace.
She's got a question.
Oh, okay.
Chair Finnegan, you do have a new microphone.
And I need you to identify yourself for the record, please.
Oh, Becky McCann-Gasky. I thought they said it. I still have to say it. Okay. The sequel section, Article 19, on categorical exemptions lists all the appropriate activities that fit under each category. The Wardfield Obstruction Removal Project, because of the nature and scope of the proposed activities, does not fit under any of the categorical exemptions. Maintaining existing landscaping in no way can be interpreted to include the removal of trees on adjacent private land. Maintaining existing landscaping can be interpreted to relate to county airport property. The Far 77 airspaces over private land are not extensions of county property. Now, Wardfield was activated in 1943. Eight years later, the first permit was issued in 1951, when Don Clausen was airport manager. The permit was reissued in 1962. A couple waivers were granted, resulting in the 1964 permit, followed by an amended permit in 1974, and the current permit issued in 2003. No Wardfield permit has ever been in violation or suspended, and as owner of the airport, the county would be notified regarding such action. The 2007 and 2008 safety inspections reference the 2003 permit, but the 2010, 2012, and 2013 safety inspections refer to the 1974 permit, which of course is not current. The 1974 permit was actually much less restrictive and allowed night flying at Wardfield. Thank you for your service and your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Donna Ruggles?
I'm Donna Ruggles. I did a public records request for all safety inspection reports and any notices of any violations ever issued at Wardfield since it was activated in 1943. I have them right here. First safety inspection was in December 1980, same year our airport zoning ordinance was put into effect. Trees are mentioned in the approach areas and transitional zones. Caltrans asked to please let them know of the proposed corrective action and to respond in one month's time. Four years pass. It's important to note here that these are supposed to be conducted annually. 1984, trees penetrate the 20-to-1 zone, and Caltrans states that this item would be an eligible expenditure of California Aid to Airports Program annual grant funds. Five years pass. 1989 safety report, no trees are mentioned, however vegetation is beginning to obscure runway lights, breakaway fencing is encouraged. Caltrans asks for corrective action. 1990, tree removal recommended. Please respond in one month's time. Two years pass. In 92, trees in transitional zone, brush. Please respond in two months' time. Same request for the next three years. In 1996, safety report reveals in order of priority dirt piles, trees, weeds. Three years pass. They were really serious of their supposed airspace. You would have thought that years ago, Caltrans would have had a very detailed map done themselves, and they never did. So there never was a baseline survey conducted in the past, so it is important to note here that there is no comparative for the current survey work that was done. Also, there are no photographs included in any reports prior to 2010. In March 2005, the relocation of Miners Camp Road was in the forefront, according to the safety report. Here it was stated that the relocation of the road would greatly enhance operational safety and reduce the county's liability exposure in the event of an aircraft mishap with an automobile. This report goes on to state that if compliance cannot be met by June 15, 2005, three months later, the airport permit would be suspended. Then in June of the same year, Caltrans retracts this, stating that they are not mandating the relocation of Miners Camp's road. However, they do consider its continued use problematic from a safety standpoint and will support all efforts by the county to relocate the road outside of the runway primary surface. There has never been a formal permit violation issued because that is the myth that the airport is is going to be closed, and this has been going on for 34 years.
Thank you. Next, please. Nobody else? Okay. Just for your ratification, to let you know, after the last Board of Supervisors meeting, I did appoint an ad hoc committee of Supervisor Sullivan and Supervisor McClure to meet with the Gasky residents to find out what the end game was and what any action be recommended to be brought back to this board or to the Border Coast Authority. So that's in play, and I'm sure he'll be scheduling something with you. So thank you. All right, it is now 10:30, and we have a timed item for presentation and introduction of the new livestock advisor, Jeff Stackhouse.
Good morning. I'm Yana Valakovic, Chair, Staff, Board. Wonderful to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to give a short presentation. I'm the County Director and the Forest Advisor in the Cooperative Extension Program for both Del Norte and Humboldt Counties, and we just take a few moments of your time to give a little update about our programming and some of our accomplishments and provide an opportunity to introduce our newest staff member, Jeff Stackhouse, who's filled our livestock position that's been vacant for a couple of years. So we're very pleased to have him here. What I'd like to do is give just a quick handout here. I provided our annual report, and I thought it would be an opportunity to share this with you directly. And that is our annual report for 2013 and highlights a number of our activities and accomplishments across both counties and the work that's been going on here. I'd like to also bring your attention to the postcard I put on top here. May 8 is the official anniversary of the Cooperative Extension Program in California and nationwide. The program actually started in Humboldt County in 1913. They were the first county in the entire state. And May 8 is the date of the official legislation that formed the National Cooperative Extension System. So we're having a little fun with that, and so I'd like to invite you or anyone who's listening to Be a Scientist with us for the day. And what we're trying to do is go through and help the public understand a bit more about some important topics around where is food produced, how are people conserving water, and where are pollinators present in our communities. And part of what we're trying to do is it's similar to the Christmas Bird Count, which you might be familiar with, where the general public provides observations of where bird populations are and then records those, and that's how we get a really good census information about bird distribution. So we thought we would take a statewide poll around these important topics and be able to understand more about these important issues and be able to connect people to the university and to some of the resources that are available. So we'd love to engage you on that topic as well as many others, and if you'd like to know more, feel free to contact me. So the website is beascientist. So with that, I'd like to tell you a little bit about our new livestock advisor, and he's going to do that with a short presentation, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. So Jeff, if I may bring you up?
Hello, Board. My name is Jeff Stackhouse. I'm the new livestock advisor, and so I was hired, started in November, November 4, and I've really been trying to get a grasp of what the issues are, how I can help the local producers, and I have put together a little presentation just to get you guys up to speed as to what I've done and where I'm headed. So that being said, I'll get going here. So a quick outline. I'm just going to give you a little personal background, where I come from, what my strengths are, my education and past research experience, my current program, where it's headed, and the future events of that program. So a little background about myself. This is my parents' property. It is a small ranch in Shasta County I grew up on where we raised sheep and cattle, and it's really where I gained my love and appreciation for natural resources and the livestock background that I've taken through to my professional occupation. First thing is, in my title, you might have noticed livestock slash natural resources. And really, I just want to take back or step back a moment and say that's a pretty big topic. Livestock itself could easily be its own occupation and is natural resources. So my education has kind of fortunately been directed towards a pretty good fit towards this. So I started my bachelor's work at University of Idaho, where I received two BSs in Wildlife Resources and Rangeland Ecology and Management. And from there, I went to North Dakota State, where it was one of the few schools that had a pretty strong range and livestock component, and I was able to find two major professors that really combined those, where I studied galliforms and passerine, so different bird species and the grazing effects on those species. And from there, I interviewed for this position and was hired, fortunately. So a little bit of my past experience. I did, as I said, a lot of bird work in the Dakotas, where I studied owls, game birds of pheasants, and sharp-tailed grouse, passerine, saw the songbirds. I also did work on prairie dogs and prairie restoration there. A little bit on the livestock side, again, in North Dakota. I did some work on cover crop trials, which is essentially, once the weed is harvested, we try to get crops on the ground to keep the soil microbes alive for the duration of the growing season. And with that, we were able to use cattle and sheep both to increase the grazing season into the winter. So this is one of my 40-acre food plots photoed here, where we had actually standing corn as a cover crop that we used for both livestock and wildlife food sources in the winter to increase the population of both pheasants and whitetail deer while producing economic benefit for local cattle producers. So current program, as I said earlier, I've been educated in the deserts of the Northwest and the Great Plains. The ecosystems are quite a bit different than locally here on the coast, a much wetter environment than I am accustomed to or was educated in. So the first thing I've been working hard on is trying to get needs assessment, figure out what the issues are that face producers locally, and how I potentially could help do research to answer questions or simple things such as outreach. So some of the things I've already accomplished, I have listed here. I have already done a winter livestock range health symposium down in Eureka that was very well attended from both beef producers from Humboldt and Del Norte County. That was back in February, and we had both UC people there, NRCS. The Humboldt-Del Norte Cattlemen's Association showed great support of that, as did the California Beef/Cattle Improvement Association. So they funded the dinners and really helped get the word out of what I was doing, and as I said, it was an extremely well-attended event. The next thing I did with Yana's assistant was succession workshop, which was two evenings, two Tuesday evenings. And really, that's a more broader natural resource focus, and it's all about trying to pass land to the next generation. So we're working through estate taxes and different... There's many different paths, and I really was educated more so than I think a lot of people in the room by the presenters we had and the talks we put together. But it was very interesting, and that, again, was well-attended by folks from Humboldt and Del Norte Counties. And then lastly, I had a spring dairy workshop, which was mostly... I invited USDA folks, FSA and NRCS, to work through with the local producers what the new farm bill presents, the new challenges of it, the new opportunities of it. So when it first came out, we were in this drought initiative, and everybody was scrambling to meet two deadlines. One was March 3, and the other was April... or March 27, sorry. And once that kind of passed, there was a little calming, where people didn't know what the farm bill actually had besides these few high-dollar drought things that they knew they had to scramble for. So I tried to put this workshop together targeted towards the dairy folks, because they weren't affected by the drought as much as the uplands cattle guys. And it was well-attended, again, from both counties, and I had pretty good feedback as to the appreciation that the dairymen had for that working group. I guess the last thing I wanted to touch on here was the 4H buyer recruitment. So especially in Humboldt County, they have... The Redwoods Acre Fair is going from a sale of champions to a terminal sale for all attendees for 4H and FFA kids. So what that does is just increases the number of animals that need to be sold, and I've already met with one 4H group that the Redwood Acres Fair organized, and I volunteered to go to two additional groups and would be willing to attend any 4H group in either of the counties to discuss ways to encourage businessmen to come and support the youth in a very, at least in my opinion, a very construction... or not construction, but very unconventional way to increase agriculture and improve youth development in both the counties. So currently, I am working on finding research projects, and there's kind of three tiers of research that I'm interested in. One is producer-driven research, which tends to be very practical. Currently, I'm putting out exposures or cages to keep cattle out, and with that, I'm trying to estimate forage production. From the forage production, I can figure out tons per acre, if you will, for feed, and then I can go and advise people on stocking rates, so how many animals their property can sustainably produce. So that goes into the range production assessment. I'm doing an irrigation trial right now in Ferndale, which is a naturally subirrigated pasture, so the producers that own that property are kind of questioning, is it worth putting a new conventional irrigation system in on a property that's already moist throughout most of the year? So what we're doing there is I've again built these exposures, and I'm clipping it monthly to mimic cattle grazing, and we're going through and watering one exposure, not watering another, to try to mimic, again, irrigation during the dry months and try to get a cost-benefit analysis of putting in an irrigation system. And then lastly, I'm working on putting together an internal parasite trial. There's a new dewormer that's come out that's called Long Range Wormer, and it increases the effectiveness of a dewormer by an additional 90 days. So instead of 60, it's 140, I think. Don't quote me on that, though. And then lastly, working again with Yana on some regulatory-based research, and that's where we want to do some research that kind of addresses some questions with regulation. And one of those questions is oak woodlands encroachment of conifers, and what are the steps that we need to take to allow people to restore these oak woodlands that have been encroached with conifers and protect that very unique ecosystem within the two counties? And lastly, I am open to novel research, new stuff that hasn't been done, and that's really more reactive research, I think, to me, is people come up and say, hey, I have this question. I don't know anything about it, and I'm real open to any advice or questions that folks have on the landscape, so. Some of the upcoming events, I'm going to run through these quickly as we run out of time, but I'm doing a goat education day on April 26 down at the Ferndale, the Humboldt County Fairgrounds. And then, again, touching on what Yana said, May 8, I'm working here locally at a local middle school with some other university folks to outreach to children and maybe some folks that don't have the connection with agriculture as my general clientele. On May 28, I'm putting together a grazing workshop for both Humboldt and Del Norte Counties through Humboldt County Cattlemen and Humboldt County RCD. And then we are also planning an additional workshop for the succession, the passing of lands to next generations, as there was such interest in that, that they wanted to go to the next level. They wanted to get deeper. So we're trying to find even more, I guess, more technical speakers that can talk about actual steps that people need to take while passing their land to the next generation. And then lastly, I want to do additional 4H buyer recruitment days with 4H kids. I really enjoy working with the youth, and I think that's important in my job. So May 8, Yana touched on it, but we're going to come do some presentations. Where does your food come from? Where does your water come from? And then local pollinator exercise, where we'll walk around with the youth. Identified needs for Del Norte. I've been speaking with some of the producers locally. There's a need for pregnancy testing and artificial insemination training workshops in the local area. And then works in progress. I'm working with Humboldt County RCD and California Department of Fish and Wildlife for their north coast grazing plans for the Aleutian goose habitat in both Humboldt and Del Norte Counties. And then I'm also working with Humboldt County... Humboldt and Del Norte County Cattlemen's Association and California Department of Fish and Wildlife to increase elk tag numbers and write new environmental plans. And then lastly, this week, actually, I'm working with the dairy... the North Coast Regional Water Board, looking at and inspecting dairies to give them ideas of improvement and reduce nutrient runoff. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Very good. I tell you, that elk management plan is a necessity. They're just overrunning the county. But Supervisors, Jerry?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm curious. Have you weighed in on the Department of Fish and Wildlife's decision to not renew leases, grazing leases for this year, which is going to affect the goose habitat and is going to force those onto private properties?
Yes, I am very involved with that currently, and that's what I was speaking towards when I said I'm working with the Humboldt Del Norte... or the Humboldt County RCD. We are currently writing a plan in conjunction with California Department of Fish and Wildlife that is going to be used for both counties.
I kind of understand that, but we're looking at a year out. Is that correct?
Correct.
So there's going to be no grazing, and those geese are going to be pushed off onto private property for a year?
Correct. And the forage is going to go rank on us, which isn't going to help anybody.
Right.
But our problem is everything is at Legals at the state California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and they're a pretty slow-moving organization, and really, our hands are tied until the legal folks get back to us and say yea or nay as to our grazing plan we wrote. And the real problem is the lease. It's not the grazing plan, it's the wording of the lease and the legalities of it. Who's responsible? And currently, there's some real issues with it that we see, one of which is personal vehicle liability insurance needs to be a million dollars for somebody that's running cattle on fishing game ground. And there's just some real financial issues that are going to be a problem. They're trying to lump these grazing allotments into bigger allotments, and they want you to have a one-time payment, where traditionally, it was monthly leases. And it's really going to be difficult for some of the smaller producers to compete and even chase those leases.
Yeah, and I know in our area, they're taking something that was working to something that's not going to work.
Correct. We realize that. We're trying to work to...
Supervisor Gitlin?
Thanks. Good presentation. I appreciate it.
Well, Jeff, first of all, welcome to Del Norte County. Tell us about this May 8 event. I'd like to go to that. You're up here in Del Norte County, May 8?
Correct.
Now, who, what, where, when, why? Where is it exactly you're going to be? What time is it? Is it an educational opportunity? Is it an observation? Tell me a little bit about the event, because I'd personally like to go to that. It sounds very interesting.
So our hopes were, and still are, to have it open to the public, but currently, we're working with a local middle school, and the...
Now, where would that be? Is it Smith River? Where are you talking about?
The one just down the street.
Okay, locally, right here in town.
Correct.
The middle school.
Yes. Sorry.
No, that's...
You're good. And we like that site because of the garden that they have, the local garden at the middle school, and we're really trying to work on a way that we can open it up to the public without, I guess, causing disruption in the education program, which is understandable.
It's a great idea and involve the kids, and I'd like to go there. So I appreciate your letting me know the details.
You're invited, Roger. You're invited.
Another question I wanted to ask you. Do you have any intervention with Bureau of Land Management in your job?
The only work I've done with the Bureau of Land Management so far is I'm on the local Weed Council. So we're working... It's just a small working group where we identify needs and issues as new invasive species come up on the plate. But other than that, I haven't had much interaction with the Bureau of Land.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, thank you.
Oh, Jeff, welcome to Del Norte County. I'd like to reiterate, I guess you always have to ask a double question, the local Weed Council, when you say Humboldt County, that has a couple different meanings to it.
Yeah, sorry.
Just a couple things. Back on the elk situation, is there any movement right now to track the elk, to actually... right now to track the elk, to actually do a head count on the elk? Cause that's the big thing, is they don't know how many elk are out there.
That is, that is a, that is a large problem and the Humboldt Del Norte Cattle, Cattlemen, Humboldt Del Norte County Cattlemen have just written a letter that is going to be sent to the Fish and Wildlife Department. And that is a letter asking for support of local biologists to receive funding. And we have also already spoken with the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation and they are in high support of this. However, it needs to be approved by the Fish and Wildlife Council and they need to give us the blessing to start working within her, you know.
Well, and also, also on the grazing thing, um, has that conversation happened with state parks? Cause that's where all this kind of started, is the problem that we have on the leasing situation is parks is in there as well as fish and wildlife and it would be good to have some kind of management plan going forward on that. Um, the other thing is, I'm glad to see you up here, cause quite frankly, um, I'd sent, you know, and Yana did respond to my email, but, um, there's not a lot of Del Norte events in here. And that's, um, since you're covering both counties, I, we, we'd like to see you up here a lot more.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Um, thank you. Uh, it, I appreciate having someone that's excited about their career and what they're doing and bringing energy into a community, so that's greatly appreciated. And in your, the elk request, have you applied to the W C B?
I'm not familiar with W C B.
The Wildlife Conservation Board to ask them for funding of that project?
We have not.
Because that would probably be something that I think we could help with and, and at least get a count in our county because the elk population, if you drive down Elk Valley Road these days, you can come across a herd. And then Smith River, I think there might even be two herds. And then up country, there's, oh, there's five herds. So, there's like, they're expanding and yet at the same time we know that Prairie Creek herd is shrinking. And so, we really need to get a handle on what the herds are doing in Del Norte County because I agree that we could up the allotment of tags.
And, and the tags have been, due to our efforts already, the tags have been raised to their ceiling. So, they've been raised, they have an additional 10 tags this year, but that's the ceiling of the environmental document and I need to work with the local fish and wildlife to rewrite that document to increase the ceiling, cause until it's rewritten and approved by, by the state fish and game, or fish and wildlife council, we don't even have an option of harvesting any more elk.
Well, I'm sure that we would be happy to assist you in contacting the W C B.
Okay, thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Jeff, Yana, thanks very much for the presentation, great job, looking forward to seeing you some more. Um, I contacted Steve Zaley out of Sacramento that's visiting all the U C C cooperative extensions, had mentioned he hadn't been up here. You might reach out to him, um, out of Sacramento, um, maybe he can lend some support however. But, uh, anyway, welcome, thanks.
I do have one more, I'm sorry, just clarification question that you said that Redwood Acres is now an all-in sale, not just the champion sale?
Correct, yeah.
Terminal sale?
Terminal sale.
But here, our fair is still a champion only, is that correct? I mean, how do you get to move to that? Cause I know that there's always like these kind of long-faced kids that are sitting there sometimes going, I didn't get to sell my pig this year.
I think, I'm not positive about this, but I think it comes down to the fair board's decision as to, as to what animals sell and what animals do not sell.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And with that, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, pick up our 1045 item. The Board of Supervisors is gonna adjourn temporarily and we are going to reconvene as the Board of Equalization to consider and approve the following. I approve a stipulated, or stipulation to value, uh, on a couple of different, uh, issues. One, parcel 11818022 on the 1213 tax roll and parcel 1180403 on the 1213 tax roll as well. So, presentation time. Should be an easy one.
Yeah, they're not too bad today. Okay, good morning. I didn't come to bombard you with paperwork today, so I'm prepared to answer questions, but I don't actually have, you know, packets of stuff for you, right?
Well, I think it's what's important, is there, is a proposed stipulation that both the assessor's office and the applicants agree?
That's correct.
So.
Um, so there, there is a, a written statement of fact for the basis evaluation on each one. I don't know if you have further questions on that or you'd like further explanation?
So, any questions you, would you like us to take them separately?
Sure, yes.
Okay. So, let's go ahead with, uh, parcel 11818022. Any questions on that? And if not, then I would like a motion to accept the stipulated value?
Some moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, public comment. Back to the board, hold the vote, please.
Supervisor McLeor?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Finnigan?
Yes, and then the second one is to, uh, I'd like to get a motion on agreeing to the stipulation of value on parcel 1180403.
Some moved. Second.
Some moved and seconded, public comment. And that's back to the board. Any other input or questions? Hold the vote, please.
Supervisor McLeor?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Finnigan?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Very, very much. We love those that are agreeing.
It's always nice.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and the board is now going to adjourn as the Board of Equalization. We are going to reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. We have one more item to take up and that would be item number 20, to discuss and take possible action in relation to the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority request for a loan. Jay, you wanna start it?
Sure. The, uh, Border Coast Regional Airport Authority has made a request to the Board of Supervisors in relation to the RSA improvements, runway safety area improvements. The authority is asking for a loan of funds up to 1.8 million dollars and based on an amortization schedule over 20 years and the actual payout would be over five years. What this loan would allow would be for the immediate action on mitigation as well as the actual improvements. Now, there are, uh, other partners that are involved in this. They have been, uh, in discussions with the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority regarding their contributions. The, uh, funding that it would be, uh, pot, a potential source is the Simpson Timber Yield Sale money. It is money that is currently invested by the county. The ensuing revenue is currently used for an offset to property tax. This came from the sale of Stimson property. As an investment, the airport authority is asking to take out a loan that would essentially pay 1% above the local agency investment fund, which is where the, uh, funding is currently at, plus 1%, not to exceed a total of 3%. There could be an early payout. As we went through the discussions, we did take this before the proactive financial management committee had discussions. It is possible to, uh, produce the loan and I would ask that as we go through this process that the board also, if approved, give direction to staff to work with the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority to look for another funding source over the next five years. The idea is that if, if we work together, there should be another way to find an, an additional funding source and reinvest this money through the treasury. And I believe Janine is here to add any, um, additional information the board might have and, uh, I'll answer any questions the board might have.
Just to add to what you already said, this was a strategy that was employed and encouraged by the proactive financial management, uh, committee. It's been employed by this board most recently in the loan we made to the first five for the Family Resource Center. In fact, it was the largest payout to the county from which the county benefited from this type of loan. The same results are expected, uh, if we approve this as well.
Yes, and the, you know, the security of this loan would come from revenue through the, uh, Border Coast Regional Airport Authority. Obviously, the investment by the partners is, is very important and, uh, it would also include in an, an, an additional investment by the Board of Supervisors through the budget process as a partner in the authority also. Yes, the first five loan was, uh, was the first loan made through the Stimson Fund to that extent, which was over a million dollars at the time. And, uh, I believe that as we go through this process and with the, uh, the blessing of the board to look for additional funding, this is a possibility that we could approach and be successful in.
And to make it quite clear, it's, it's a not to exceed or an up to 1.8 million dollars. It's a drawdown loan, it's not 1.8 million dollars out of the bank all at one time.
Yes, it's essentially a bridge loan is what it is.
Right. So, questions?
A quick question, Jay. Uh, the, I'm reading from the, uh, summary here, uh, the Board of Supervisor requests to agree to the loan request with an interest rate of 1% above the local agency investment fund pooled rate for five years amortized over 20. Is, so what is the rate?
Point two six.
I'm sorry?
Point two six.
Okay, that's what our money's earning now.
Currently, LAF is, and has been for many, many years, an extremely conservative and low rate.
Pretty modest, yeah.
Yeah, the, the rates out there are not high and haven't been for many years.
Any other questions?
My question is, is this, are we asking for enough in case the partners don't produce soon enough? Will this be enough? Because there wasn't any, it, it wasn't clear when the partners needed to commit.
It's two, you're asking two separate questions. One, the amount that's needed and then the second is the mechanism for the payback.
The amount needed is what's been requested by the Border Coast to fulfill the responsibilities of the Regional Airport Authority for the project. As far as the commitment, I believe the first payment date would be December of 2014.
Janine, did you wanna weigh in?
Yeah.
Looks like you're, I'm gonna get to your seat there.
A little clarification still.
The one, the 1.8 million dollars, Janine Gallatieto, sorry, representing the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority today. The 1.8 million dollars is the total match funds that we anticipate to have for both the mitigation and the construction of the runway safety area, um, and the environmental work that needs to be completed to get the permits, which we anticipate to have done this month. And the request will be for each member entity to be repaying on the loan at $20,000 per annually. And then in the interim in between now and the end of five years, we anticipate receiving or obtaining a permanent loan when we have more information about what act, the actual cost will be. Cause in the meantime, we have a grant pending at State of Oregon Department of Transportation. Um, we're applying for, uh, through Caltrans, we're applying, Environmental Enhancement Mitigation Plan, um, we'll be applying for that. So, if we're awarded anywhere up between 0 to 500,000 on each of those, or 400,000 under the Oregon Department of Transportation. So, that will go to offset. So, whatever is received, then of course we won't have to permanently borrow that much more. And at that, and within, um, between now and five years, there'll also be that time to plan for the terminal, the access road and all the other improvements that will be done at McNamara Field. Are there any other questions?
And the, the partners have, is there a commitment at this point or are you working on that? I mean.
Oh, I've met with each of the partners. Each of the partners have taken it before their councils. There seems to be at this point, except for the, uh, Curry County, which is, as you are aware, facing some difficult financial issues. Extremely difficult, not just difficult financial, but, um, extreme financial constraints. We, uh, have met, I have an agreement now, um, the attorneys have drawn up a member agreement and I will, after, if you approve the loan today, that I'll be sending out those agreements for each member entity. I am scheduled to attend, um, Elk Valley Rancheria's council meeting tomorrow night.
So, it looks promising.
With the agreement, yes.
So, it looks promising.
Yes. If not, then the security, I believe in Jay's, um, staff report also said the security would be taken from the 279,000 that currently the county provides to the Border Coast Regional Airport for maintenance and operations.
Can I get a motion, um, to approve the resolution of Del Norte County Board of Supervisors authorizing the loan upon execution of security agreement and the issuance of a securitized limited obligation note and financing statement and authorize the chair to sign the documents to direct staff to provide funding annually for up to five years for the county's portion of the loan security as requested by the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority and further direct staff to cooperate with the Border Coast, uh, authority to seek long-term financing over the next five years.
If I don't have to say all that again, I will enact a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
So, a move and seconded, further just, uh, public comment. Okay, back to the board. Further comments?
I, I just wanna say that I think that this is exactly what we set this money to do.
It really is a win-win.
Yeah.
Well, and this does tie into the five major projects. This is one of the ones we need to get done, uh, so we can move on to replacing the terminal. May also note that, um, for the public's edification, this is funding that is not one-time funding. This is a source of funding that came to the county as mitigation and, uh, would continue to be, um, in the county treasury and will continue to be over time. It's not a one-time funding source in any means and that's what the board originally set this money aside for.
Hold the vote, please.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor McLeor?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Finnigan?
Yes. And with that, I'd like to thank everybody who attended today. Meeting is adjourned, we'll see you next time. Have a good weekend. Oh, it's not the weekend yet.